Gentlemen, I call this meeting to order for our April the 24th, 2024 board meeting. Welcome everybody here today. Our first item on the agenda is their school board discussion. School board budget discussion, I'm sorry. Gentlemen, you all can take off whenever you want unless Mr. Tadlock has something he wants to discuss first.
You do have, the responses to the questions have been uploaded to the April 10th Board of Supervisors. The April 10th meeting, joint meeting with the school board. Board of Supervisors and the school board. So you do have those items. I don't know if the board has any specific questions for me or anyone else.
All right, board members have any questions? Luttrell, on to questions. I guess everyone's had a chance to kind of go through all of them. Got any comments on anything, Luttrell?
I don't, basically at this point, I think what I would be looking for, unless the board has other questions, we would just need a timeframe as to when the board wished to have the public hearing for the school board budget itself.
All right. Any board member have any comments on that? Any suggestions of a timeframe that you want to go into?
How soon can we have it?
You do have to advertise it one week. So the soonest that you would be able to have it would be the week of the board, board week. May 8th or May 9th. May 9th, I do know we have five public hearings already scheduled for our regular board meeting.
Not going to be a good night then. Separate.
The regular means on the 9th, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Could we have it on the 12th? 12th is Sunday.
I mean, 13th, excuse me.
13th is that Monday. I mean, we need to have it soon as possible.
Would we want to have it prior to the board meeting? So is it wish we had any information that we did have to carry over? Perhaps we could do it at the board meeting and get it taken care of.
You're talking about the 8th?
Or before. Would you say the soonest?
How soon?
The soonest after we advertise would be the 8th, May 8th.
Which is the day before the board meeting?
Yes, yes. If we had information left over or needed information, we got 24 hours to still work on it.
I agree.
So Junior, you want to, so are you asking for now, Junior, again, please?
That we have the public hearing on the 8th prior to the regular meeting on the 9th.
On the 8th?
And my reasoning behind that is that if by chance we have leftover information on the 8th, perhaps we could conclude it on the 9th.
It's up to you all, gentlemen.
Joe, that's your motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to have the school budget public hearing on May 8th at, what time, gentlemen? 7 o'clock? This is where we normally have things. You didn't put that in your motion, though?
No, I didn't put the time in there.
We can make a motion to have 7 o'clock, if that's all right with you. All right, rest of the board?
Yes.
All right?
All right. 7 o'clock motion may be put in.
All right, so we'll meet, have the school budget public hearing on May 8th at 7:00 PM. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. Next item is supplemental appropriation from the Refuge Collection.
Yes, sir. In going through some of the line items and the categories, this particular item is not over. But in looking or forecasting out what we would be spending for waste management, our recycling and our debris site, we do anticipate going over in that particular line item. So what we would be asking is that the board consider doing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $125,000 to that particular line item.
What is that, $125,000 coming from?
It would be coming out of the general fund.
I move that we appropriate that $125,000.
All right, we got a motion and, got a motion. Do we have a second? We don't have a second. A second's not required. All right, is any other discussion on to it?
What do you attribute that to?
That's just, of course, we renegotiated our contract last fiscal year before this fiscal year. So the amounts were higher. And it's, anytime you look at those, you put in your best guesstimate as far as tonnage going in and out. It all depends on the usage of the trash site. Sometimes you have higher tonnages going out depending on the time of year. So anytime you put that in, unless you superinflate that number, which I mean, we can do, but we try to keep it as, as low as we can. But there again, without going into a negative line item on this, we would need additional funds.
So what would you do at the end of the year if we hadn't had this brought forth tonight? How would you close it at the end of the year?
How would it be closed out? It would just show up as a negative line item.
Where would the money come from to balance?
Out of the general fund.
So it's a combination of inflation and possibly tonnage also.
Right. I mean, it's a combination of factors there.
So you're figuring we need another $175,000? That would be more than enough to cover?
That's, we put extra in there to make sure that we had some cushion there to make sure that we had enough to cover for the end of the, but we only have two months left.
It's $125,000, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry, $125,000, sorry. Let's see. Last year in 2023, Rightway didn't do a whole lot of recycling as far as shredding down there. Has done a lot more this year. I mean, the last part of the year and this year. See, how much are we off by? How much have we spent right now? How much was budgeted and how much have we spent?
We budgeted 1.5 and we're right at 1.3.
So it's still 200,000 there.
Correct.
And so if we didn't appropriate it at this time, that line item would go in the red and it would just be appropriated later, is that right?
Well, it would never be appropriated, but what it would do is come from the general fund. I mean, all of these funds come from, all of the money sits in the general fund. It's just the budget designates where those monies are to go.
All right, so we got about, would you say about 300,000 left?
200,000.
200,000, so you want to put, so 200,000 is not going to be enough money for the next two months?
Not, not based on these. I mean, your waste management costs ranges anywhere from 100,000 to, on the high end, 120,000. So you're looking at 240,000 right there.
Yeah, you own the budget.
And then, on the high end, 120,000. And then you're looking at roughly 13,000 for Rightway Recycling each month. So that's an additional 26,000. Then you have the debris management, that's roughly 5,000 on the high end.
Okay. All right, any other discussion from the board? If not, is the board ready for a vote? All right, well, I'll call a vote then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All those against? I guess your motion passes. Luttrell?
Was that 5-0 or?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess put it down, that way it's 5-0.
All right, the next item I have is a supplemental appropriation for auditing services. And this is to cover the cost of Rodifer and Moss and Robinson Farmer Cox. And actually, that 15,140 also covers the the 9,000 that we've received so far for UHY. But in order to cover the cost for the forensic audit, we're asking for 175,140 for auditing services.
All right, you'd already budgeted, what, 70-some thousand? Is that correct? Or had you budgeted anything?
Yes, sir, we budgeted 72,250.
All right. And we've already spent, what, 87,000 and change, correct?
Correct. And 9,000 of that was for UHY. 9,700 of that was UHY.
Yeah, so we're already over budget on the normal. So you're asking for another 175, which would be DHY was, I forget how much that was now.
UHY was right at 160,000.
UHY, I stand corrected. All right. Any other, any discussion from the board on this?
That would be coming from the general fund as well.
All right. What's the board's pleasure?
Move that we appropriate.
All right, we got a motion to appropriate the 175, 140, 175,140 dollars to have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion to second, got any other discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, your motion passes.
All right, the next item I have is for Microwave Networks. We do have an invoice and this is related to the regional radio system in the amount of 10,850. If you remember, several months ago, we came to the board requesting funds to do a wire transfer of monies to Microwave Networks because we were still working on the ATC lease agreement. We have signed the AT lease agreement that was sent out yesterday. So we are waiting on ATC to send that back to us. However, I'm not sure all of the other documents that Bank of America has required has been, they want the original document. So in order to send them, mail the documents to ATC to get their final signature on it and get that to Bank of America, it's going to be past the May 1st date that the invoice is, needs to be submitted by. So what we are asking, in the event that Bank of America does not accept the digital copy signatures of that lease agreement, that we can, we are authorized to do a wire transfer of 10,850 and then recoup that cost once we are able to get the funds going back with Bank of America.
All right, hadn't we already made one payment to them before?
We did. That was for the second, or it was one of the steps that we were within, with Microwave Network. This is the equipment shipping cost is what they're billing us for here.
That's what I said, listed here as freight.
But we are wrapping up the ATC lease agreement. Like I said, the county side has been signed. It's just we're waiting on signatures on ATC's side.
Now, what seems to be the holdup from them?
We were going back and forth, there were some equipment that needed to be added that L3 Harris had identified and we were going back and forth with ATC in getting that corrected. That has all been finalized. And again, we signed that yesterday, had to get that moving.
All right, any comments, questions from the board? If not, what's the board's pleasure?
A move that we approve.
Second. Yep, motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, your motion passes.
All right, the next item is, I believe several of you all have received phone calls regarding the vote on Bridge Creek and also the vote on Lodge. What staff is trying to determine is if the board wishes to, for staff to put together a packet for your consideration at the May 9th Board of Supervisors meeting to seek the VMRC grant. And that is for the abandoned or derelict vessel grant through VMRC.
Well, I know I've seen, received quite a few calls on to it and I think some other board members here have received quite a few also. I would like for you to go ahead and proceed. I'm not speaking for the rest of the board, but I think the rest of the board will go that way.
So they need, those two vessels need to be taken care of?
Yeah, they do need to be taken care of, so.
That's your motion.
So the motion is to proceed as soon as possible with this.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll put together a packet and have that to the board at the May 9th meeting for you all.
All right.
Next item is the consideration of amendment to the bylaws. At the last regular Board of Supervisors meeting, it was requested to look at adding committee reports to the agenda. The agenda is set by the board's bylaws. So if we want to change that, we would need an amendment to the, to those bylaws. I didn't know if you all had further discussion related to that item.
What would that amendment say specifically? That they're required to give us a report for every meeting or are we asking them to?
Well, the way that I understood it, and I may be wrong, it would sound like the, any of the committees that the Board of Supervisors sat on would be the opportunity for the board members to provide the committee updates. But I may, may be wrong, I don't.
I mean, it's, we, we all sit on committees, but we never come back to the board meeting and give a overview of what the meeting consisted of. And I think we're missing out on some, on some stuff because I sit on the library board and if I don't bring the information back to the rest of you, you know what the library is doing? Same thing for the regional jail. You know, we have members attend those meetings, but we don't know, we don't hear how the meeting went, what was approved, what wasn't approved, what the topic of discussion was, anything, so. That was my point on that.
You know, I sit on regional jail and all, a few other boards too. And it, and it really wouldn't hurt for everybody to know what's going on. It's nothing that's a secret, you know, that you can't say unless it's something in a closed meeting. But, you know, it wouldn't hurt for every member to know what's going on. You know, I don't have a bit of problem with doing it. I think, you know, we ought to do that for everyone. You know, all meetings that everybody attends.
Be brief, I mean, you don't really need to get into.
Yeah, if it's, if you, nothing happened, you just, well, nothing happened that time.
Something would have happened.
Yeah, well, unless the meeting's canceled.
Right.
Yeah, but, you know, we just had that one meeting up there to the regional jail was the night we had that tornado come in. So it was all kind of in uproar that night.
Well, I think that, that board, public need to know and we need to know too.
Yeah, we got planning commission, we got, anybody that sits on the economic development should be giving us report back. And that's not one of the board members, I think Drew that takes care of that, don't you, Drew?
I think the Economic Development Commission Executive Director, Robert Bullitt, provides a report in the Department of.
That's right, he does, don't you? What do you think about that? He does, thank you. But, you know, if the board wants to do that, you know, I'll try to come up and report to everybody on what I sit on. Maybe short and sweet.
And, you know, it'd be, be good to hear, you know, what's going on.
You make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the bylaw amendment to add the minutes, meaning add the discussion or the update on the meetings that we attend.
All right, got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I assume you want to start at our next board meeting?
I guess the amendment needs to be made and voted on first, don't it, Luttrell?
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to ask the board, where you wanted that to be placed on the agenda.
Yeah, want to do it on this coming month?
Yes.
All right, let's put it on next, on the upcoming month's board meeting.
So was the, that last motion to amend the bylaws or was that just to add? Just so we're clear.
Clarify that, Jim.
Well, I guess it would, that wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an amendment because it's not in there now, right? So we would have to.
We're going to have to amend the bylaws, so we have to make a motion to amend them. I think, did you just make a motion to approve?
I made a motion to amend the bylaws to approve that section to be added in regarding the committee reports. It'd be a part of our agenda.
Is that satisfactory, Luttrell?
Yes. In what section do you all want that? Do you want it after county admin report, before Board of Supervisors items? Or do you want it after Board of Supervisors items?
No, before.
Let me do it before.
Before.
Before, right.
Yeah, before, yeah, before will be fine.
All right, so we'll, the motion would be to amend the bylaws and to have the committee reports before the Board of Supervisors items.
All right.
So section, the new section five would be committee reports.
That'd be fine. That's all right, the rest of the board?
And the committees that only meet once every four months, they should only be brought up on those four month, four month anniversaries.
Yep.
No, you'd bring it, bring it up, not on the Atlantic Division Commission every month.
Only when you have a meeting.
Social Service meet every month now.
What was that, Mr. Long?
Some committees meet every month.
Yeah, some of us have to meet every month.
Yeah, we meet every month, Social Service.
Yeah.
PDC meet, don't meet every month, yeah.
Next item?
Did you all vote on that? I got a, a motion and. Five, okay, sorry about that.
We did, it was 5-0.
All right, thank you.
Unless you want us to re-vote?
No, no, that's okay, thank you. Last item I have is the updates to the personnel policy were made. At the last board meeting, the board had requested that we have that to the board by the next Board of Supervisors meeting in May. We made those changes and the draft was sent to the Board of Supervisors for your consideration. So I don't have a, I have it on the agenda tonight for any type of vote, but I just wanted to make you aware that we did send those out.
All right. Any questions on that from the board members? Did everybody get it? What day did you send it out, Luttrell? 417 Personnel Policy. Everybody's got that out as soon.
Yes, sir.
All right.
That's the correct date.
Yeah, 417. So we'll have that at our next board meeting then. All right. You have anything else?
I do not, no, sir.
Board members have anything before we go into closed meeting?
I got one quick thing.
All right.
The debris sites that we have, the local guys that do landscape work, where do they take their brush and debris? Do they, can they take it to the site? In Horsehead, they're not allowed to take it there?
We, we have not allowed commercial dumping of, of that type of stuff there at that debris site.
They can't handle it, it's not big enough or what?
That, that's just been the, the standing policy of the county. Now, if the board wishes to change that, I mean, that's something we can talk to Rightway Recycling, who does the debris site and see what, what he could handle, but.
I've been approached by some of the guys that do the lawn care and they have to go to Lively.
Lively's closest spot.
And take all the stuff there and they didn't know if the county would reconsider or have a discussion on, on doing something that would kind of help them out a little bit to not have to go to Lively. But I don't know all the ins and outs of it, so that's why I'm asking.
We'll have to go back and take a look at the bid document because we just sent that out for advertisement.
Okay.
And see what's in that bid document.
That's going to up your tonnage and it's going to up county cost again.
Yeah, well, they, they pay a fee there and I think from what I understand, they wouldn't mind paying a fee here.
Well, you know, we had talked a little bit about that earlier.
Right.
About having to charge a fee. For the contractors coming in and, so I don't know. I know we've talked about it, but then we got to figure how we're going to. I know we've talked about it, but then we got to figure how we're gonna, how we're gonna charge the fee, who's going to take care of it? There was right many other little hurdles in it.
Right.
A lot of it goes to other places around, my neighbor takes a ton of it over there. And I don't know. It gets a little aggravating sometimes.
You can't even, you can't even take it into Northumberland if you, if you're a private person and you have your little small dump truck.
And I gotta take that.
Dump trucks are not allowed.
And I think what, what happens here is, and the frustration of it is, for the guys that have their names on side of their trucks, can't go in here, but if you're doing some side work and you take your truck in and you don't have your name on side of it, you can somehow go in. And I think that's the frustrating part, that, that they are having to deal with.
They're, they're trying to do right and they see others who aren't.
Yes, sir. And that's, that's a little frustrating.
Absolutely, I concur with him.
Is it too much trouble to look into it to see, I know we got to, if we're going to look into it, we got to come up with a way in order to know who's coming in, somebody's got to keep track of who's coming in.
Well, we talked about a permit process.
Yeah, and then you got to know what you're going to charge per load. And then you're going to have to find it what Right Way's cost would be on for the extra stuff he's going to charge for, all the extra debris.
So let's, let's get through the budget first, then we can take that on later.
All right.
Because I think that's going to require some time to figure some of this stuff out, and we, we got a, we got a budget to take in first.
The budget's more important than that right now, in one way, in another way, man, I know that's important.
But we can, we can bring it back, let's get it put on the agenda for July, so, once we get this budget straight.
The meantime, Luttrell, you can be checking with other counties to see how they, how they're doing, you know?
Yeah, we, I mean, we can certainly check with surrounding counties.
Right.
I mean, Lancaster certainly uses the individual there in, in Lively.
Right. So you should add that estimate by the time we get back to it.
It's a, it's a shame we don't have another site that somebody else, a private site that somebody could take it over and take care of it right there. And they could be dealing with all the charging and everything. We got a lot, a lot of land back behind that dump. A lot of land there, you're correct.
Well, that's, that's part of the reason why I want this board to come together and see what direction the county needs going because that may be something that we could implement in the future and also the county could get some revenue off of it and maybe create some jobs here, right here in the county.
That, that's very important, right. Create some jobs right here in the county. All right, Mr. Tadlock, you put that, put that little pot on the stove, let us start assembling. We get moving, we'll invest right after the budget. All right, anyone else have anything else before I ask for a motion? All right, Luttrell, you have anything else?
No, sir.
Ready to go in closed meeting?
I am, um, when I read the motion is, does the board wish to have Mr. Our Chief Balderson?
All right, board one, Mr.?
Wouldn't hurt, maybe.
Mr. Balderson, Calvin Balderson here, all right, the board does, all right?
All right.
So you're included, Mr. Balderson, if that's all right, Mr. Balderson? All right.
I need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters in Sections two point two thirty-seven eleven A twenty-nine, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditures of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary or the county administrator, assistant county administrator, and chief of emergency services, as they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, Section two point two thirty-seven twelve F.
Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it, I was going to call one and a half, because I can see, he, he already gave me the notion, give me the idea.
Well, you want, you want to do that before?
Yeah, let's do that before.
Okay.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a ten minute break?
Right, sounds good.
All right, I need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters in Sections two point two thirty-seven eleven A twenty-nine, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary or the county administrator, assistant county administrator, and chief of emergency services, as they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, Section two point two thirty-seven twelve F.
All right, got a motion?
So move.
Got a second?
Second.
I got a motion, second. All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed meeting, ladies and gentlemen.
We're good. I need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
All right, got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, second, roll call vote, Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Haney's aye. We're now back in the open meeting. And you want some direction on the elevator?
Yes, sir, the proposal put before us is in the amount of fifty-nine thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars in order to make repairs to the elevator in the old courthouse.
Motion to approve that? All right, we got a motion and a second, any other? Anything else? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You need anything else from us?
Uh, no, sir.
All right, I have a, I'll entertain a motion to carry over till May the second, two thousand twenty-four, at five thirty PM. Got a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank everybody for coming, thank all staff for being here tonight.